Here.
Mrs. Dobis.
Here.
Mr. Means.
Present.
Mrs. Rule.
Here.
Mr. Shubal.
Present.
Mr. Spicuzza.
Present.
We have all nine members present this evening.
Thank you, sir. One of the things this board likes to hear is that our students are able to apply what they have learned in the classroom to real world situations, real world experiences. And thanks to the Bethel Park Chamber of Commerce, three of our high school students have not only had the opportunity to do that, but to also earn statewide recognition for their efforts. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce Bethel Park High School seniors Cassie Brown, Abby Hartzell, and Kelsey Tischler, and Bethel Park High School Diversified Occupations and Marketing teacher Emily Smoller, who have joined us this evening to talk about their experiences with the Bethel Park Chamber and the Bethel Park High School DECA organizations. Ladies, please come to the podium, please.
Hi, I'm Cassie Brown.
I'm Kelsey Tischler.
And I'm Abby Hartzell. This is our DECA project, our marketing project. That is a copy of the thirty-page paper that we had to present at the state conference, and this is a binder that we put together of just other information about our project. The Bethel Park Chamber of Commerce recently reopened this summer, and after building a connection with them, our DECA chapter aided them in one of their first projects since reopening. The Chamber came to us with the idea of doing a holiday campaign. This gave us the opportunity to better our community and to help the local businesses in our area. We began meeting with Connie Rule, member of the Chamber, in early October to begin planning. Together, we discussed how we would acquire the necessary information to make our campaigns effective. We created two surveys, one for businesses and one for consumers. We created them using a Google form, which actually collected all of our data in an Excel spreadsheet, making it much easier for us to analyze later on during our campaign. Before we could send out the business survey, we had to collect current email addresses for the businesses that were already members of the Chamber. From there, we emailed it to the business owners and received about twenty responses, and their feedback told us how the Chamber could better serve the local businesses. For the consumer survey, we emailed it to teachers in our district, posted the link on our district website, and printed the link in the district newsletter. We received two hundred and thirty-five responses to that survey, and the feedback from our residents told us what events they would have an interest in attending this holiday season, as well as what businesses could do to create more foot traffic.
So, the consumer survey is the survey we use mostly to help in our campaigns. So, we asked what Bethel Park businesses can do to gain more of consumers' business, and seventy percent said they wanted more coupons, another fifty-three percent said they wanted lower prices. So clearly, consumers in Bethel Park were looking for a bargain. This helped us later for our events to create rewards. We also found that seventy-seven percent of consumers planned to shop locally during the holiday season, so our goal for this project was to increase that percentage. We also asked why people shop locally. Eighty-seven percent said for convenience, which was a great reason, however, we really wanted to show how it contributed to the local economy and supported local businesses. We also asked how often people shop in Bethel Park. Fifty-three percent said they shop weekly, so we wanted to increase that to more than once a week. We also asked, which was a very important graph for helping us through our campaign, was what consumers would be interested in participating during the holiday season. So forty-eight percent said contest, and another fifty-seven percent said they wanted a local business loyalty card, which helped us win one of our first projects. It was the local business loyalty card. This is an example of what it would have looked like. We had twelve Santa hats mimicking the Twelve Days of Christmas theme, and the goal was for consumers to go out shopping to the stores printed on the back, and they would get Santa hat punched. When they got twelve Santa hats, they would go to the Bethel Park Chamber of Commerce or the high school to receive coupon and gift certificates. However, it was hard to figure out the logistics of this, considering you had to print the business cards, hand them out to businesses, and educate business owners in a limited amount of time, so we decided to create a Twitter competition after finding that thirty-four percent of our consumers said they read their media through Twitter and another thirty-four percent through Facebook. So we tweeted about this to advertise for it, and the goal was for consumers to go out and tweet a selfie with the products they got at the store, the store itself, or really anything they could think of, and they would use the hashtag #shopholidays as an entry. We would pick three winners at the end of the month, which would be most loyal, most holiday, spirit, and most Bethel Park spirit. However, with lack of time, we didn't get as much entries as we had hoped, however, businesses are already excited about next year doing the loyalty card, and hopefully with more time, we can carry out the loyalty card and the Twitter competition.
One event that proved to be very successful was the tree auction. On our day off, we went into the high school and turned our lobby into a winter wonderland. Ten local businesses donated trees, and we set them up in the lobby and numbered them one through ten, and the first ten clubs who contacted us were given a tree. And they were able to decorate the tree however they would like, like the Hawkeye Tree decorated their tree with the theme of Frozen. And what we did in order to raise money from this is we auctioned off the tree, and we sold the tickets, two dollars for one ticket and five dollars for three tickets. And we sold these tickets at school functions, school sporting events during the school day, and also at the Santa brunch. And our principal, Dr. J., you all know him, asked us to keep the trees up even longer than we had intended because there was such a positive response. And three clubs went out and bought trees themselves and set them up in the lobby. So overall, this tree auction brought a lot of holiday cheer to the halls of Bethel Park High School. The Santa brunch brought our whole campaign together. We used the LGI room one Saturday in December, and we had Santa show up, and he visited all the children who were in attendance. Also, we had a lot of activities for the kids to do, such as decorating cookies, coloring, storytime. And in order to feed the people who came, we asked local businesses to donate food. So Patsy's Place donated pizzas, and MBM Contracting donated coffee, hot chocolate, and things like that. And in order to raise awareness for the businesses at the Santa brunch, we printed a flyer and put all their names on that and handed them out, so that would raise awareness for those businesses. But overall, the Santa brunch brought a lot of cheer to a lot of children because they got to see Santa and have a good time.
Finally, in January, we conducted a follow-up survey, which we found that ninety-five percent of people actually did shop locally during the holiday season in comparison to seventy-seven percent that said they planned to, so it was great to see that our campaign was such a success.
Great, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
And don't go anywhere, I think Mrs. Rule's gonna take the floor now and has...
We just had such a great experience working with these students. I mean, they just contributed so much to the Chamber and also to the community, and our businesses are waiting for the results of the survey. So, and we will continue to use that survey, so it will not go unused at all. And we wanted to thank them for all of their time. I'd like to introduce Diane Ford because Diane worked closely with the girls. We, Diane's our administrator at the office, my assistant, and we really did do quite a bit, we enjoyed the holiday ones particularly, and loved the tree that they did. They put together a tree that was very symbolic of the holidays because they got gift certificates from all the merchants, and there were gift certificates all over the tree. We thought that that was really very clever idea, and the merchants liked it too. Diane? You wanna get a picture, Donna?
Yeah.
This certificate of appreciation goes to Cassie Brown for her dedication, time, and talent made our first annual Shop Local campaign a huge success. Creating a market survey to identify local consumer and business buying patterns, analyzing the data, and providing a written report that will assist the Chamber in determining how we can better serve our community members and businesses, coordinating our first annual Winter Wonderland Holiday Tree Contest, and hosting our first annual Holidays Santa Brunch. Her work continues to further the Chamber's mission to promote unity and community. Thank you, Cassie. And these all say the same thing, so this goes to Abby.
We also want to present one to Ms. Tara Nath. I actually gave it a name once, she did something in the very beginning for us. She created our Chamber Charlie. And what Chamber Charlie represents is, the Chamber meets every Wednesday to, we have our, all of our events on Wednesdays. And so, it's over the hump day, so Chamber Charlie is actually a camel. And so, she dressed it for the holidays, she had a cap and a Santa suit, and then for, we have a business attire. Charlie is a unisex name, so we have Charlie dressed in a men's business suit and a woman's suit, so, with heels. So we thank Tara Nath for what she's done in the presentation certificate as well. Thank you.
Earlier this month, Bethel Park Director of Technology Ron Ryer was honored at a dinner held at Heinz Field and hosted by the Pittsburgh Technology Council as one of the finalists for the Technology Council's Chief Information Officer of the Year Award. Ron was recognized among the top technology executives in the greater Pittsburgh area who work in the arenas of industry, nonprofit, education, and government as individuals who use their innovation and creativity to improve our region. Nominees were recognized for their contributions and achievements in planning and deploying their systems, future technology goals, management philosophy, and service to the industry and community. And while Ron was not named the winner by the Technology Council, he's still a winner in our book. Ron, on behalf of the Bethel Park Board of School Directors and Administration, it is our pleasure to publicly recognize you this evening for this great and well-deserved recognition from the Pittsburgh Technology Council. We also thank you for all that you do to not only provide this district, our staff, and our students with the necessary technology tools to be successful, but to also keep the district up and running on a daily basis, which we know isn't necessarily an easy task. And at the same time, you somehow managed to keep a watchful eye on expenditures, as well as the future, in order to plan for upcoming needs. Please join me at the podium so I can give you this certificate. And would you join me in a round of applause for Mr. Ron?
Thank you, thank you very much. It's an honor, and, you know, really, only able to do what we do here because of the support of the school board, the community, our administrative team, the teachers, and most especially my staff. So, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. That was the shortest speech he's given, wasn't it?
Back on the ladder with you.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items?
So moved.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the business meeting of February seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, and the regular meeting minutes of February twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen.
Second?
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need to announce executive sessions held March second, two thousand and fifteen, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. March seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. And March twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report, and Mrs. Flota.
You've got me tonight in lieu of Dr. Stark and Ms. O'Rourke. There are many items of good news to share with you this evening, so without further ado, congratulations to Bethel Park High School seniors Gabrielle Brookins, Stephen Davis, and Emily Cucan, who have been named National Merit Scholarship Finalists. They're now among the fifteen thousand high school seniors who are eligible to receive one of eight thousand National Merit Scholarships to be awarded this spring. The high school recently honored all eight of our National Merit students, the three finalists, and our five commended students, Joseph Beaver, Erin Copeland, Alexander Fleming, Jessica George, and Giffen Werner, with a luncheon for their families. The next time you're in the high school, please check out the National Merit Scholar Wall of Fame in the cafeteria. It really is a great tribute to our outstanding academic students. Congratulations to the members of the Bethel Park High School Mock Trial Team, who in only their second year of competition qualified for the Allegheny County Mock Trial Playoffs and advanced to the quarterfinals. They defeated perennial powerhouse Swickley Academy in the first round, and unfortunately lost to our neighbors Upper St. Clair in the quarters. But this year's case was a murder trial, and they did a great job. Congratulations to team members Natalie La Lama, Emily Augustine, Jack Brownfield, Danica Moody, David Urson, and Elliot Lehman. This year, ninety-three Bethel Park High School students qualified to compete at the 2015 DECA State Conference. This year, thirty-one students were finalists, and eighteen students earned medallion awards. Twenty-four of the thirty-one finalists qualified to compete in the DECA International Career Development Conference, which will be held next month in Orlando, including our four DECA students whom we heard from earlier this evening. Congratulations to all of the students, and especially to our first-place winners, Cassie Brown, Abby Hartzell, Kelsey Tischler, Tasha George, Carolyn Bona, Becca Kabitski, Natalie La Lama, Sean McLean, Tara Nath, and Sarah Stevens. Congratulations also to Tara Nath, who earned the $1,000 PA DECA Scholarship and the $1,000 DECA Student of the Year Scholarship. Two teams of Bethel Park High School students received accolades at the 24th Annual Science Bowl. The team of Sean McLean, Akil Rajasakar, Max Reese, Brendan Tresh, and Trey Williams won their division and finished in fifth place overall in a double-elimination round competition against the other seven divisional winners. The team of Emily Augustine, Billy DePudeloff, Rachel Dimmick, Zachary Craska, and Adam Musciano received the civility award for behaving professionally and showing extreme sportsmanship. Congratulations to both of these teams. This year, twenty-five Bethel Park High School AP and Honors German students were recognized by the American Association of Teachers of German for their high scores on the 2015 National German Exams, earning six gold awards, three silver awards, and three bronze awards, with thirteen other students recognized for noteworthy achievements. Congratulations to gold award winners Joseph Beaver, Stephen Davis, Corinne Herbert Street, Jack Brownfield, Matea Pranjik, and Brendan Tresh. Earning silver awards were Rachel Dodson, Thomas Weber, and Joey Wasco. Bronze award winners were Rebecca Swainy, Grant Wilson, and Ethan Tabler. Congratulations to all of these students and to the thirteen students who also received recognition for scoring in the sixtieth percentile or higher. In other German news, Bethel Park High School German students earned two first-place, four second-place, and two third-place awards at the 2015 Free Rivers German Day Competition, where they competed against students from twelve area schools. First-place winners were Rachel Dodson and Joe Wasco. Second-place winners were Corinne Herbert Street, Brendan Tresh, Adelaide Flowers, and Julia Angotti. Bringing home third-place awards were Jack Brownfield and Becca Najinski. Congratulations to all of these students for outstanding work. Thank you to everyone who visited the Galleria to vote for the newspaper rack makeover completed by thirty Bethel Park High School art club students as part of the Almanack's Extreme Rack Makeover Contest. Newspaper racks were delivered to the high schools in the Almanack's circulation area, and students were asked to give those boxes a makeover. The Bethel Park High School students worked together to problem-solve and transform their rack into the Cathedral of Learning with King Kong hanging off the top of it. The winner of the contest was determined by a combination of money inserted into the newspaper racks by the public and a vote by a panel of local artists. The Bethel Park rack earned $119.30 worth of votes, while the second-place rack earned $28.14. The art club was able to keep the $119, and they also received an additional $300 as the first-place rack. The Galleria loved this rack so much that they asked to keep it on display for a little while longer, so if you haven't seen it in person, you still have time to go to the Galleria to see it. It's on the second floor near BRGR. The Almanack also had a request from Cool Springs to put it on display there, and I'm just hoping they don't want to use it as a miniature golf course. Just kidding about that, but Cool Springs does want it. But the rack is awesome, and you really need to see it to believe that the picture really doesn't do it justice. Bethel Park High School junior Emily Augustine was one of fifty-four Pennsylvania juniors who were selected to attend the prestigious Governor's School for the Sciences, which will be held this summer on the Carnegie Mellon University campus. Emily was selected from a pool of three hundred and ninety applicants from across the state, and she'll now have the opportunity to live on the CMU campus for five weeks this summer and participate in several hands-on science activities. Congratulations, Emily. The Rotary Club of Bethel Park named Bethel Park High School senior Jess Cook as its February Student of the Month. Each month, the Rotary Club recognizes a Bethel Park High School student for outstanding contributions to school and/or community. Jess was recognized for her contributions to Bethel Park High School as president of the Student Government Association, and her involvement with the Principal's Advisory Council for Students, the National Honor Society, and the softball team. Additionally, she teaches CCD at her church and coordinates youth softball clinics to encourage young girls to get involved with the sport. Congratulations, Jess. Congratulations to the Bethel Park High School vocalist Anna Henkels, Marie Dykstra, Joe Sarafini, Joshua Como, and Michael Crutt, who were selected for the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's All-State Chorus that will perform at the PMEA State Conference this week in Hershey. Joining our six All-State Chorus vocalists will be Bethel Park High School musicians Chris Bright and Joe Wasco, who will perform at the PMEA State Conference this week in Hershey as part of the All-State Band. Congratulations to all of our All-State musicians and vocalists. Congratulations also go to Bethel Park High School musicians Samantha Smith and David Alman, who successfully auditioned and were selected to represent Bethel Park in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's Region Orchestra Concert. The Bethel Park High School Drama Club went back on the road this spring, visiting Memorial Elementary School to present a whole-new, original Feed the Need to Read musical assembly, featuring many of the elementary students' favorite characters, including Pete the Cat, The Very Hungry Caterpillar, The Moose with the Muffin, Anna and Elsa, and Mrs. Buckley, even a couple of the letter people. The assembly is designed to kick off the school's accelerated reader program and get the students enthused about reading. Thanks to Mr. Nagel and the high school students for putting on another outstanding performance. Our winter sports teams at the high school recently concluded a successful winter sports season. Our girls' basketball, wrestling, boys' basketball, boys and girls' swimming and diving, rifle, and cheerleading teams qualified for the WPIAL playoffs. Our section champion girls' basketball team advanced to the WPIAL semifinals, as well as the second round of the state playoffs. The boys' basketball team advanced to the WPIAL quarterfinals and qualified to participate in a play-in game for the state championships. Our competitive cheerleaders finished in third place at the WPIAL championships and received the GTM Sportswear PIAA Team Spirit Award at the state championships. At the national championships, the team earned one second place and two third-place awards. Six wrestlers placed high enough at the section individual championships to advance to the WPIAL individual championships, where section champions Paul Dunn and Nino Bonacorsi finished high enough to compete at states. Paul finished in third place, and Nino finished in sixth place at states. Paul was also named to the WPIAL All-Star Team at the Dapper Dan Wrestling Classic, where he defeated his Illinois All-Star opponent. Sean Halligan finished in fourth place at the WPIAL Rifle Championships, and Becca Kinzel finished in sixteenth place. Both students qualified to compete at the state championships. Two swimmers, Becca Yannick and Vinnie Tavoletti, medaled in two events each at the WPIAL championships and competed at states. Two divers, Breonna Litwin and Maria Capozzi, medaled at the WPIAL Diving Championships. Lexi Stevenson competed at the state indoor track championships for the fourth consecutive year. The ice hockey team qualified for the Penguin Cup playoffs. Congratulations to all of our winter sports athletes, and good luck to all of our spring sports athletes. This year, seventy-three students participated in the Neil Armstrong Middle School Battle of the Books with the students on the Readers of Oz team, Isaac Norella, Caitlin Hughes, Christian Fanny, Paige Plack, Molly O'Toole, and Allison Scarlett, finishing in first place and also winning the costume contest. The poster contest winners were the Nerd Herd, Lily Browning, Amelia Gorman, Eliza Bauer, Sadie Fedor, and Anna Coonahan. Congratulations to all seventy-three participants because they made the conscious choice to read. Thirty-seven Bethel Park Elementary gifted students participated in this year's Elementary Enrichment Exposition held at Memorial Elementary School. This year's theme was entrepreneurship, and the students worked very hard to create a business, put together a tri-fold assembly board about their business, create business cards, and prepare a presentation, which they shared with the expo's attendees. This year's enrichment expo included authors, entrepreneurs, architects, explorers, designers, store owners, and more. It was a great event that showcased the creativity of our elementary students, and it looks like some of these people might be DECA students when they get to high school. Thank you to Elementary Gifted Coordinator Lisa Yost for organizing an outstanding event. Memorial first and second grade students in Mrs. Spell's room worked very hard to present an entertaining and informative tour of Bethel Park. The students selected a different aspect of their hometown and created multi-slide PowerPoint presentations, complete with photos they took and an audio narration they wrote and recorded. The students created their presentations on iPads and invited their families into the classroom to learn more about Bethel Park. The presentations were interactive, as the students asked the audience questions about their topics. Some of the places highlighted in this tour of Bethel Park included Pasta Two, the Community Center, Bethel Bakery, the police station, the fire station, the library, Eaton Park, Simmons Park, Giant Eagle, and Blade Runners. Following the presentations, a table was set up with items from all of the locations, including cookies, library card holders, magnets, pencils, and badges for all to enjoy. The students did a fantastic job, and everyone left with a renewed sense of pride about all of the wonderful places in Bethel Park. As I mentioned earlier this evening, Bethel Park Director of Technology Ron Ryer, who looks like he needs to be cloned in this photo, was a finalist for the Pittsburgh Technology Council's 2015 Chief Information Officer of the Year in the education category, and was honored at a dinner held earlier this month at Heinz Field. Congratulations to Ron for a well-deserved honor. And that, my friends, concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Flota. Student Government.
Hello, my name is Natalie La Lama, and I'm the junior school board representative at the high school. Student Government just finished a fundraiser in which students brought in change to support the boot campaign, which is actually the charity this year for Pennsylvania DECA, and this charity provides support for struggling military members and their families, and Bethel Park High School raised around $1,400 to send to the boot campaign. And February concluded Student Government's Wish Week, which is a week of fun activities in which students can place wishes in boxes, and SGA goes around granting them. For example, we had a pizza party during a journalism class, and we spent the whole week granting wishes in order to raise money for animal friends. Currently, SGA is planning our events for Staff Appreciation Week, which will take place in the beginning of May.
Great, thanks Natalie. PTA and PTO council?
Hi, I'm Kristen Christobach. I am the PTO president for Ben Franklin Elementary. Memorial- Memorial had their Science Fair Art Expo this month, and there were a lot of art projects this year, more than previous years, with very creative experiments. The fourth graders had a movie night in the gym, as well as an annual spelling bee at the school. George Washington, the students have been busy collecting box tops for their monthly classroom contest. February's classroom winner collected over a thousand box tops. The We Run Wednesdays have started as part of a training for the Kids Marathon. Students run every Wednesday during recess from now until May. The annual trail running event will be held on Tuesday, April 28th. During the first week of March, students collected coins for the Special Olympics. The students collected over four hundred in coins, which was presented to the Special Olympics on March 22nd. On March 13th, the Arts Science Fair and Ice Cream Social was held. Students competed for the best use of scientific method, most unique, most creative, and most interactive. This classic book fair was held last week and each student received a free book courtesy of the PTO. The next Family Bingo Night will be held on April 10th at 7:00 p.m. Students are busy practicing for their annual talent show coming on April 24th. IMS is planning their last big events for the school year. They are planning the Staff Appreciation Luncheon, seventh grade social, and for the eighth grade Fun Day. If anyone would like to volunteer to help with these events, please contact Heather Fontana at IMS and she will put you in touch with committee chairs. The IMS PTSO is also looking for parents who would like to work closely with the administration to plan events for the 2015-2016 school year. If you're interested, please contact Heather Fontana or the IMS office. Ben Franklin just wrapped up their third annual Read-a-Thon. The students were able to raise almost thirty-five hundred dollars and read over thirty-seven thousand minutes. Most importantly, they got excited about reading. The PTO also hosted a Spring Bingo Night for Franklin families to enjoy. We are looking forward to a Spirit Night of Readas, Reading with the Stars, and our annual art and ice cream social in April. Thank you.
Solicitor's report.
I have a written report to submit.
Thank you. Curriculum Committee report.
Yes, Mrs. Cook, thank you. We had a curriculum committee meeting on March 16th, and information was shared regarding world language and the update on the one-to-one initiative. A lot of fine information was shared, and I thank all the folks involved.
Thank you. Public comments on agenda items this evening. Any public comments, of course? I'll move into business items then, Curriculum Committee, and back to Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you again, Mrs. Cook. There are three items this evening under curriculum. Would any one like any of those items held out? Hearing none, I move number one, the school-sponsored overnight educational activity, Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science State Competition at Penn State Main Campus, May 17th through the 19th, 2015. Two, professional development. And number three, the Wilson Foundation's Training, kindergarten and grade-one classroom teachers.
Second.
Items one through three under Curriculum Committee have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Personnel Committee and Mrs. Rule.
There are only three items under Personnel. I can't remember one. There's only been three. When there's only been a page and a quarter. Are there any that any would like to have held out? If not, I move that we approve, one, approval of substitutes. Item two, approval of extra-duty responsibility program. And three, appointment of personnel.
Second.
Items one through three under Personnel Committee have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Ammets. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Spicuzza.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Seeing one item under Facility and Services Committee tonight, I move to table the motion to approve to purchase equipment for the Washington Elementary School.
Second.
Item one under Facilities and Service Committee has been moved to table by Mr. Spicuzza and seconded by Mr. Means. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? That carries nine to zero. Finance Committee and Dr. Campbell.
Madam President, there are no less than nine items for board approval from the Finance Committee, and the board members wish to have any of these items held out individually. Then, hearing none, I move the board approve item one, March 2015, salaries and bills. Number two, February 2015, financial report. Number three, budgetary transfers. Number four, purchase of school-dude maintenance work order system. I want to say that again. School-dude maintenance work order system. Number five, approval of student services contract. Number six, adoption of the AIU resolution. Number seven, broker of record for insurance services. Number eight, AIU program for services budget. Number nine, approval of the purchase of information technology equipment.
Second.
Items one through nine under Finance Committee have been moved by Dr. Campbell and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Policy Committee and Mr. Means.
There's one item under the Policy Committee. It is new administrative guidelines, number 201, Attachment B, Administrative Guidelines for the Use of Diastat in a School Setting.
Sorry. Item one under Policy Committee has been moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? That item carries nine to zero. Public comments are open now for any comments you wish to make to the board. You have two minutes at the microphone. Name and address, please.
Good evening, board members. It was great to see the achievements of this year, and I was happy to see they didn't have pharmacies on the Bethel Park tour. That's only for old folks. Can you hear me? I have a few thoughts I've put down, and I'd like to read them to you. Nothing is more important than the well-being of our children, as well as the education of them. Is the education of children heading in the best direction today? More computer learning filled with Common Core standards can be disputed as the best choice in education today. One area of learning that is being considered important by many psychologists and neuroscientists is handwriting. Computer learning cuts down the use of handwriting, and new evidence suggests that the link between handwriting and broader educational development runs deep. Children not only learn to read more quickly when they write by hand, but also they are better able to generate ideas and retain information. The goal of Common Core puts education into a national system with a progressive agenda of centralization and conformity, which is present in most totalitarian governments in the world today. I'd like to point out that in 1965, when the Elementary Secondary Education Act was passed, it distinctly stated that nothing in this act shall authorize any federal official to mandate, direct, or control school curriculum. Again, in 1970, the General Education Provisions Act stipulates that no provision of any applicable program shall be construed to authorize any federal official to exercise any direction, supervision, or control of the curriculum, program of instruction, or selection of instruction materials by any school system. Then again, in 1979, the law created, the Department of Education forbids it from exercising any direction, supervision, or control over the curriculum of any school system. When amended, the Elementary Secondary Education Act states that no federal funds may be used to endorse, approve, or sanction any curriculum designed to be used in grades kindergarten through grade twelve. Now, how did we stray so far away from these laws? We should all wake up before it's too late to escape this conformity and centralization that will eventually, could eventually, produce total control over our lives here in America. Thank you. Any questions?
Mrs. Cook, may I make a comment?
Pardon?
May I make a comment? The Common Core, the development of Common Core is something that has a lot of people upset, and I'd like to address how that came to be in Pennsylvania. These Common Core goals were not forced upon us by the federal government. Our Department of Education willingly entered into a contractual agreement where they accepted funds and agreed to implement them. They ran them through the Independent Regulatory Commission, and they were passed and implemented as regulations that we are bound to follow, okay? The Department of Education controls the funding and the funding formulas, and we have to do that in order to receive the funding that we get. The Common Core was not passed by the Pennsylvania State Legislature. It wasn't done by any law or anything like that. But due to the form of government we have and the way that our regulations are passed, they were able to do this completely independently as a contractual agreement to which they've obligated the five hundred school districts in Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
And the Board of Lee Ashland Drive, Bethel Park. No matter what they say, we have federal control creeping into our schools, whether it's by law, by legislation, by suggestion. And at the Curriculum Committee meeting, I saw that Common Core coming up frequently in the presentation, and particularly in the math. And although we were told we wouldn't even notice the difference here in Bethel Park, there is a difference, and we should at least recognize that difference. But that's not why I came to see you tonight, or what I wanted to say to you. I attended the High School Musical last week, as I'm sure everybody in this room or almost attended, and I just can't even express how proud I was of primarily the students, the faculty, the volunteers. And it was just a wonderful thing. It almost brought me to tears. The orchestra, the kids, and then all the things that were up here tonight. And it just makes me wonder why, when all these good things are happening here in Bethel Park, we still have to buy security cameras because we have vandalism occurring into our schools? And the students are now gone. But I would like, I just wish that we could get a hundred percent of our students to appreciate what we have here, what's been done for them, and what they can do. And let's get a control of this vandalism. It just breaks my heart to see all these kids doing so well and knowing we have a few people that still think it's important to vandalize our school. But congratulations to everybody who worked on the musical. It was a wonderful experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Dave Yasko, 5705 Wilson Drive. This is from the Associated Press. New York City Public Schools Declosed for Two Muslim Holidays. "After years of advocating by the New York City's Muslim community, Muslim public school students would finally thankfully no longer be penalized for observing their religious holidays," says Zaid Ramadan, a board member for the Council on American-Islamic Relations. "Let there be no doubt that the Council on American-Islamic Relations is a terrorist-supporting front organization that is founded by terrorists, funded by terrorists, and would like nothing more than to see the implementation of Sharia law in the United States. This is the proverbial camel's nose under the tent, and I would hope that this school board, as liberal as it may be, is not entertaining anything even remotely like this." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move into board comments. I always forget which end I'm on. I should keep track. I'll start with you, Ms. Davis. Did I start with you last time?
Usually, but that's a... That makes the people over there laugh, right?
Yeah. It's easier to go first.
I agree completely with all the commendations for the students and all the awards. It just makes me so proud to be part of this school district when I see all of the various things that the school is doing, the students are doing. I saw West Side Story also, and I completely agree with you. It was so moving and amazing. And I also was able to see the newspaper rack makeover down at the Galleria, and if any of you haven't seen it, it was so far ahead of everybody else's in terms of the competition. It was, you know, it was even taller because there was a gorilla on top of it. But if you haven't had a chance to see it, you can go see it down at the Galleria or in Cool Springs, when it goes to Cool Springs, or I'm sure it will continue to be at the high school. It was truly a creative work with a lot of effort put into it. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Means.
As usual, it's always impressive to see the number of students who are performing in various activities, academic and extracurricular, that are doing well. But like everybody else, I think the big event this time was the production of West Side Story, and it was really great to be able to see that. And the thing I kept thinking about is my wife was in one of the plays when she was in school, and even though it's been a few years, she still thinks back very fondly about it, and I think everybody involved with the production of it is going to think fondly of it for many, many years.
Absolutely. Mrs. Buckley?
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all of the students involved with DECA and the presentation we had this evening, and also to thank the folks involved at the Bethel Park Chamber of Commerce. I think it's time well spent for all, and I appreciate that. I, too, attended West Side Story. Was just totally, totally impressed, enjoyed the program after the fact I had to study every page when I got home. The thing that impressed me most, besides the fact that one hundred and twenty students were in the cast, fifty stage crew and orchestra, that inside the front cover, did you know tonight's show is being completely run by students? Now, that's not to say there were a lot of faculty involved and volunteers and so on, but all the information that was shared inside there, that totally impressed me, and I thank all who were involved in the production. And also, the curriculum meeting that we had on the 16th, that's also, if you weren't able to attend, there was a lot of information shared, and it's being shown on BPTV, so I would like to thank Dave Cable for his involvement and all the volunteers to share that information. And finally, thank you to the PTO, PTA, and all that they do for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spicuzza.
Hello, Mr. Ammets. I don't really feel bad for you because I'm already out of things to say. Because I have to echo the remarks of my fellow board members. One comment I made in the back room tonight was about West Side Story, and obviously the production was tremendous. You know, the students did a great job, all the people that participated, from the top to the bottom, whatever that means, did a really, really wonderful job. One of the things that I noticed when I attended was the scenery. I was just truly impressed. I know it wasn't flashy or crazy or anything, but it was just so well-done. I mean, it made you feel like you were actually at those settings, the bridge, the buildings. It was just really, really, really good. Congratulations to everybody involved with that, and all the students and teachers and faculty and administrators who are involved in all the success that we have in our district. There's a great big thank you from me for that, and I'm just glad to see that, Mrs. Cook, you ran the meeting faster than Mr. Rose, because it's not even eight o'clock yet, we're done with our meeting. That's tremendous. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rule.
I'd like to ditto everything that everyone has said, and I'd also like to thank Emily Smoller from the DECA group. She's just been a wonderful, wonderful asset and such a good person to work with. She really has worked well with the students and with the chamber. I would also like to say that Steel Centers report that they are bringing back welding. It will be in full force by fall. Auto Mechanic, same thing, and Manufacturing will also probably start up in the winter. They've been, they brought in a consultant who reviewed the curriculum and also looked at all the trends, and they're really going to bring in all these types of vocations because we just have so many people that are in our need of these jobs. I mean, they can't fill the jobs. And we saw a report by the Allegheny Conference, and they said that within ten years, we will have a hundred thousand dollar, a hundred thousand people shortage for our trades because we have so many retirements, and the students are not taking up any of the trades. So that means they'll be importing them from other states, you know, and they are concerned because if anything will lead to a decline in Pennsylvania will be that either the jobs will go away and will move to other states if they can't get the workers... the jobs will go away and will move to other states if they can't get the workers or they'll import them. So that's something really to think about. So, uh, there is being money allotted, more money this year toward, um, vocational training because of the high need that Pennsylvania and with the, um, Marcellus Shale, uh, the number of jobs that'll be sitting there for these students. And many of the schools are starting to also implement the trades around the Marcellus Shale. So it's something to think about. Our counselors need to look at that and and the parents and students need to be aware of those things. Also, um, the AIU, for the first time, took their budget this time and broke out every program that they offer. And they broke it out in such a manner that all of the expenses and revenue that each program generates will now stand alone so that they will know exactly where all the monies are going and how well each program is doing. So I think that was a great, because that's how business operates and I thought that was a real great move for them to do that. And, um, one last thing I need to mention that, um, Bunny Brunch is coming up here at the high school and it'll be March 28th, uh, in the morning, starting around 11:00. So we hope to, we have, I think, almost 50 children already signed up, so. Oh, we're at 96 now. Sorry, that's since yesterday, 96. So we're selling out fast.
That's a bunny brunch.
Yeah, get your tickets here. The bunny suit's in my car. We have a bunny, so.
It's the real Easter bunny. Don't say that. She gave something away, didn't she?
This is Bunny's helper that's in the car.
Yeah, the helper, the helper. Yeah, the helper.
It's already been said, no further comments. Thank you.
Dr. Campbell.
In the, um, boardroom in the back, I was, I have a habit of scribbling on napkins and things like that. I'm trying to have whiz and pearls drip from my lips, but they never happen, seem to happen that way. But if I recall, it might be apocrypha, but I think the Gettysburg Address. I know, um, I think, um, Abraham, Abraham Lincoln had smallpox when he wrote it on the back of an envelope, if I recall. I'm not sure if that's apocrypha, so. Tim Campbell doesn't ascribe to that illustrious type of, um, work, but, in January 13, um, 1983, um, National Airport in Washington, DC was closed because of a snowstorm that was happening at the place. And this is a, a day that forever changed me, you know, as I, as I reflect back on it many times ago. There was an Air Flora, Florida Flight 90, which was delayed an hour and a half before it could take off. When it finally did take off, after a taxi line for 49, 49 minutes, it acquired quite a bit of icing. And, um, after its rollout, it flew for approximately 30 seconds and went about three quarters of a nautical mile and then it crashed into the 14th Street Bridge, um, across the Potomac River. Um, that was like the Challenger explosion. That was like the day that Kennedy was shot. You know, those are the days that, that's the kind of things that you just really remember because I remember watching that and rapt attention, you know, when it occurred, when it was on the news. Um, four motorists died on the bridge instantly. Uh, 73 people died in the airplane instantly. Six people survived and they got out of the airplane and were clung to the, the fin, the tail fin of the, um, the 737 that went down in the Potomac. Um, they were only 40 yards from, from the shore. Now, the wind was terrible. It was, it was still snow, storming terribly. And the, the, the Potomac River itself was like icy shards. They couldn't get a boat out to them. 20 minutes later, the sun started to fade and passerbyers did everything they possibly could. They, they took fan belts, they roped them together. They tried to make ropes to throw it to the people to try to see if they could rescue them. Um, some folks took ladders off utility trucks, but they couldn't reach them, they're just too far. It was in the middle of the river, 40 yards from the, um, from the bank. And then miraculously, a, a park ranger helicopter, um, came out, swooped down, dropped a ring. One of the first people, one of the women on the, uh, tail fin grabbed that and was taken, swiss to safety on the, on the beach alongside the Potomac. It wheeled back and then this is where the, the story became really fantastic and really, really inspiring for me. The next fellow who got the ring took the ring and he passed it to another, another person and that person was taken to safety. Within 30 seconds, the helicopter came back, passed, the guy got the ring again and passed it to another person and he passed it on and he was swiss to safety. Third time this happened. And then the fourth time, when they went back to pick, um, you know, pick up the other person, that man gave that ring away, knowing that probably his life was, was in jeopardy, but he gave that ring away. When the helicopter came back, the last time, the man had slipped underneath the icy Potomac and died. And it was thought forever that we wouldn't know who the hero of Flight 90 was, but the, the helicopter pilots, they just cried like babies, um. Grown men on the bridge, they cried. They were so affected by, by what they had witnessed, what they had transpired. And when it was thought they would never know who the, the, the hero of the Potomac was, the hero of Flight 90, the DC coroner made an incredible discovery that only, of the people who died, only one had water in his lungs, which meant he had to be alive at the time. He had to inspire that water, inhale that water at the time. None of the other bodies had that. That man's name was Harland Jr., Harland Williams Jr. You probably don't remember him. You probably don't even really notice because, you know, his whole life was a legacy to not, not being special. He wasn't a hero. I mean, if anything, he made a legacy out of like, um, playing it safe. His friends called him Chub. He was an affable, heavyset guy, but he didn't ever really do anything. He was a bank examiner. That's what he did for a living. He was a bank examiner. But, you know, his sacrifice was so incredible that affected me so many years later. This is 33 years later now and I still choke up when I think about the story when I hear it. I want to translate that into the action that we hear tonight. We heard so many people involved with volunteerism. You know, we're not asking anybody to give their life, not make that ultimate sacrifice, but what is the most precious asset you have is your time. And the time that you make to go ahead and dedicate to, to the various causes that we do. We heard the, the young women do, uh, do the wonderful presentation from DECA. The teachers, the advisors that give so much of their own time, above and beyond the call of duty. The PTO folks that we have. The citizens who come to this meeting. The teachers, the paraprofessionals, the citizens, you know, who support any way they possibly can. And for me, most importantly, these board members. I've, um, I always thought the board members were up here like, uh, a couple hours twice a month and that was about the extent of it. I didn't have a stinking clue of what these guys do. You know, I'm getting towards the end of, of my term, you know, that I've had the chance to run, but I want to just express my gratitude for the legacy of volunteerism that takes place in Bethel Park and how so many lives are changed by so much, by the action we do. We often sow seeds that we don't even have a clue what we do. We don't even have a clue, but we make it work. It makes us this wonderful vibrant community that we have in Bethel Park. And I'm just so grateful at the opportunity I have to work with my fellow board members and administrators and teachers and parents and PTA people. And, um, I've said enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Very eloquently put. Mr. Ammons?
I have nothing else. Here, Dave.
That's a hard act to follow. I just wanted to acknowledge that our Top 21, our, our premier choral group, will be performing by invitation this Friday in Hershey at the Pennsylvania Music Educator Association's Annual Conference. Um, they've, they've applied for this honor, um, many, many times and they were surprised this year to be finally selected. And, um, it is a very competitive opportunity, um, but their, their skills and talents and gifts are finally being acknowledged and recognized. So we wish them well. We know they will represent us well and, uh, break the leg, Top 21.
Great. Oh, my gosh, sir. As, as everyone has said, kudos. It's just wonderful to be from Bethel Park. And the, the one thing that stood out to me was in the PTA/PTO Council Report, she said they're planning their last events for the school year. It's just hard to believe. Like, I can say happy Easter, happy spring. We're, we're getting to the end of the school year, believe it or not. I need a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.[1758.71]